Select Board's meeting, May 1st, 2018, Tuesday, 5:30 PM. In attendance, Vice Chairman Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Sidney Pelleton.
I don't know, but you know, I just think it's good that finally the adults are back in charge and that youngster is going to be put in his place.
I don't know if he'll be put in his place. That's usually what his wife does. We'll do a weekend to encourage that like we always do. All right, so Douglas is not here this evening. He is out of way on business. So I guess I will play the game of, um, public comment is first at 6:31.
5:31.
Oh, 5:31, yeah, 5:31. I don't see anyone in the audience, but I'll still ask if anyone has a public comment. They're more than welcome to state their name and address and give me their line of bulk. Well, we got nobody. Off to a good start. All right. So first up, we have a hearing. We're going to wait until the gentleman shows up because we're still a small town in Suffolk and we do those nice things for people.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So let's go with our acknowledgement of payroll warrant, 1-8-2-6, dated 4/30/18, and the amount of $211,389.57. You sure that's all of it? That seems awful low.
No, Russ and I signed it.
Okay, there's enough there, all right. Just want to make sure.
I checked every line.
I doubt you checked every line.
Every line.
You'd cry if you checked every line. All right, so let's keep the minutes. A regular session of minutes for 4:23. I need a motion.
So move.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any executive that day? I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And our action item. Action items, the first one up I have is a Suffolk Towne Graham in the Regional School District. Let's see, what is this?
The reason I put that back in front of you is I need a R S D P.
Oh, I'm going. Yeah. "In honor of district students who lost their lives serving in war, the Suffolk Towne Graham Regional School District cordially invites you to attend the dedication of the Veterans Memorial." I'm going to say it wrong, is it foyer?
Oh, it's good, yep.
Did it good, all right. I paid attention in one class. "On Monday, the 21st of May, 2018, at 9:00 AM, at the Regional High School."
I'll be there, I'm sure Doug's going to be there.
Put us down for three and we'll take the fish.
If you notice.
Yeah.
The next, I'll take that, sir.
Here we go. We're going to start this whole mess again?
Yeah.
It's going to be a long year.
The next one.
I'll be at that thing on the Monday, too.
Oh, so put us down for four, no fish.
Okay, the next one is the appreciation dinner.
All right.
Happens to be on the 12th. It's prior to the...
Please join us for the appreciation dinner in order to say thank you for those who have contributed to the foyer project on May 12th, 2018, at 4:30 in the evening at the VFW Post, 872 Hall.
Sounds like a good event.
151 Point Grove Road, Suffolk, Mass, May 5th. Okay. So this is the week before?
Yeah. No, two weeks before.
What's the date on that?
The 12th.
The 12th. And what's the date on the other thing?
It's a week from...
21st.
This is a week from the stuff coming Saturday.
Okay. Uh, I got Suffolk's prom and it's Mother's Day weekend.
Oh, yeah.
So I will, I have a daughter going to the prom, so I will be unable to attend.
Um, so put us down for two. I'm sure Doug will make it. I'm sure I have to go. And I got no extra help, I checked. Because I lose four people.
Okay.
And there's an event somewhere, so I'm really screwed. All right. Next up, A2, American Legion Post, 338.
Just an invitation to march on the Memorial Day Parade.
Yep. At 9:30, it starts off with the Suffolk Plaza. We've got to be there for 9:30, it probably starts off at 10:00. Ceremony at the Veterans Memorial, there'll be second ceremony at the Suffolk New Cemetery on Route 10. There's a luncheon after at the American Legion Post. Any questions, give them a call. Do they need a count? I think I can make this. I don't think I have an event that day.
I think all three of us will be there.
Yeah, I think we can make it.
I know Doug's going to be there.
Yeah. Oh, well, since a matter of fact, I would like... I would like to also make a motion, or I think Doug should be the speaker, should they need...
Yeah, he's not here tonight, so we'll let him speak.
I think Doug would be a great speaker. And the permit is next. Okay. Up next is the permit for the parade. Memorial Day Parade Permit, 5/28/18.
They'll be going down with 10 torches, I have to notify the state.
Yep. Back to detail. Ooh, look at that, huh? Yeah, gather at 9:30 at Suffolk Plaza, 10 o'clock, the parade steps off, goes down the street like we said, stops at the memorial, and then heads on. We drive to the cemetery, right? We don't walk anymore?
Right, no one walks anymore.
That's too bad. All right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Permit has been approved. All right, A4. This is a nice poster. Grand opening of New England Disc Golf Center. I just went for the chiropractor today, a matter of fact, but it's a different disc, so...
Imagine what we'd all look like out there playing this.
Oh, it'd be pretty scary.
Russ, bring the ambulance.
All right, ribbon cutting ceremony at noon. Where is this at? 51 John Mason Road, Suffolk. So we're all welcome to come. And Russ, you want to cut the ribbon?
Unfortunately, again, prom and Mother's Day.
Is it the same week?
Right.
What are these people doing?
I'm at UMass.
Doug Mogul will be there cutting the ribbon, since he has nobody that's going to the prom, and he's not here, so we can put him in charge of everything.
A little help.
You'll let him know. Make sure he gets the big scissors, so it cuts easy.
He'll do it.
Okay, it's great they're finally getting somewhere with that and opening it up.
I went by it the other day, I got to sign up, it looks good.
Could you tell, was all this construction done, or are all the neighbors upset?
No.
No, it looks nice. Imagine that.
Scenic and...
In terms of all that planning board.
Looks like a beautiful recreational facility.
Were you on the planning board when that was going on?
I wasn't on the planning board, but it seemed every time I walked up there, they were in front of them for something. There's a long road for that, for that business. All right, next up, A5 is a discharge lien for 50 Pine Wood Road for a Jill Cordis for $24,000. So we need a motion...
To approve the chairman to sign the lien.
So move.
All right. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sign. All right. I'm signing. It's wrong too bad.
We'll fill in the rest.
Joseph Deedy. I can't read my signature, try. There you go. All right. Notification of chemical treatment for the Congamon Lakes. Looks like on Monday, May 7th, they will be treating.
When's the Connect City call?
Probably Friday.
Yep, so we can't swim in there on 5/8, and we can't drink the water in there on 5/11. No livestock on 5/9, and you can't irrigate till 5/13. So we're covered. We're all safe.
And pretty much everybody's used to this?
Oh, yeah. No, they're excited to see it. That means they might have a nice summer out there. Then A7 looks like someone's resigned.
But you know, this doesn't foreclose later on if this, if they start determining that there may be algae.
That algae.
Then there'd be a separate application of an algae side.
Sure.
And those are done within 24 hours, that decision to when it's done.
Yeah. Yeah, they do a great job.
Remember what the guy said during the budget hearing? If you wait too long...
Yeah, you could lose the whole lakes for the summer.
You're going to close it for the summer.
All right. Next up, we have a resignation for David B. Hopkins from the CPC. He went to one meeting, he had a great time, and he decided to move out of Suffolk. So, that's not saying much.
David is a great guy, of course, his wife, his family is a long time family.
Yeah.
And David served previously.
Yeah.
When he was younger.
Yeah, he basically said they bought a summer home in Connecticut.
Yep.
And decided they only need one home.
Right. So I wish him nothing but the best, and I thank him for not only his service on this board, but on his previous service.
Yep. So motion to accept.
So move.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
How are you today? Good. Are you going to turn the tape recorder on?
Yes, I am.
Let's go. And now the questions will be at the end.
I wasn't aware last time.
Well, that's fine, I'm just telling you Doug's not here, I'm in charge. I'm a little more rough than Doug, so I'm just telling you now. It's all good. We can ask a million questions, so take good notes so you understand what the heck we're talking about.
And you're always welcome to coffee in the morning, too.
Thank you. Do you have an agenda?
They should be right out there where you were supposed to sign in.
Where you signed in?
You still got to sign in.
All right. It's Chapter 90 Reimbursements, it's pretty thick. Does that mean we got more money this year?
I would count it.
Oh, we got to sign every one of these?
It's the allotment you got last year, all you're doing is submitting the reimbursement paperwork to the state.
You want to sign that at the end?
Because remember, Joe, you fronted the money, so you didn't actually get it.
All right, so do you want to make a motion to approve?
They're going to pay you back, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And tonight, we will sign these. We don't want to sit here for a half hour for that. All right, A9. See, I learned this from Doug, you cross them off as you go. All right. Seasonal help. The Department of Public Works is looking for a few good men or women to paint hydrants and clean out gutters, and a few other things at the transfer station. So we need a motion to approve two individuals?
To post.
To post.
To authorize for two people to be hired.
A motion to authorize the post for two part-time employees for this.
Right. So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sign that, pass it down. Suffolk Fire Department's up next. Accept this, my recommendation, recommendation to place Anthony Anagata on the Fire Department as an EMT. He comes with experience. He is currently working for National Ambulance, working for an ambulance service, has given him some prior experience, and therefore I feel he will be, he will do well in our, in our third observed observer program. What's our third observer program?
It's the first stage of getting cleared.
Wonderful.
The new ones ride with the other two, season ones.
Gotcha. And by doing this, he'll end up becoming one of our EMTs that fill in shifts and all...
Call force.
Call force, there you go. There's the proper word. All right, I need a motion for Anthony.
A motion pending all the requirements.
You got it. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I asked Tracy about Chris Makiel.
That's coming.
Yeah, I saw that. I read that somewhere.
That's going to be under the supplemental, A10.
I should look through this, then.
It's going to be a little later.
Well, A10 is right here.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it. Not a problem.
Well, no, that's Anthony 2, there's another one.
Nope. We'll find it.
She'll be next to the last.
A13, application for a license. Oh, yeah, here it is. A15, we'll take it out of order.
Oh, A15.
A15.
Chris Makiel.
Yep, from the Suffolk Fire Department. With great pleasure from the chief that he would like to put on, oh, I'm sorry, can I announce that one of our current firefighters has taken the EMT course and has passed with his EMT national exam. I am requesting that Christopher Makiel be reappointed as a firefighter EMT. We would like him to start third observation program again in direction of our EMS coordinator. I need a motion for Chris Makiel.
So move.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Never ends, huh? Some leave, some come in. That is, that is a revolving door.
Well, you know, some of them, they pick one.
No, it's all good, yeah.
They want to do other great opportunities.
Yeah.
Think about how many people you've lost that have gone on to full-time departments.
It's exhausting.
Right? You lost one to the Cape in the last couple of months.
That goes with it.
Cape, Long Meadow.
Yep.
Hinsdale.
Sturbridge.
Right. So you've basically trained four other individuals in a volunteer call force that have gone on to full-time employment somewhere else.
We should make them, we should make them stay a year or get a pass back.
So that is a, that's something we've said, the training, John.
Yes.
Including yourself in your career path.
He's a product of Suffolk?
Yes.
Product of my book.
Yeah.
I remember him way back, and Kevin, too.
Yeah. Bunch of kids back in the day.
Yeah.
All right, so this next up, A11 is permits and fees in regards to hawkers and peddler licenses.
And tag sales.
And ta, and what?
Tag sales.
And ta, oh, those tag sale people.
It doesn't make a dollar a day.
Where we did.
This has been reviewed in a decade, right?
Been looked at for 24 years.
24 years, so it was a buck 24 years ago.
And probably prior to that.
All right, so let's take this on our advisement. When Doug gets back, we'll tweak some numbers and take a good look at it. So table the motion.
So move.
Make a motion to table. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's tabled. A dollar for tax, the paper costs more. All right, review of hawkers and peddlers licenses. Nope, we did that. So this up is A12 notification. So the opioid seminar is coming up.
Yeah, remember it was canceled back in February because of snowstorm?
Little bit of snow, yeah.
And we were told about it, and they didn't have the time, so Rotary finally...
May 16th at 6:00 PM, right here in the town hall.
The auditorium is booked for this Sunday.
Yep.
Yep. So far, we got Police Chief Dave Ricardi, might be his next to his last speech, you never know, other than when he leaves, you know? Oh, that's good, I mean, he's getting, speeches are getting less and less. Detective Robert Landis will be up next, and then Michael Taggart is going to speak, Jen Willard, Joe Trammell from the principal's office, I know the principal's office, Russ Anderson from the Fire Department, Chief Russ, and Select Board member Doug Mogul, probably his last speech, too. And there'll be some folks from Recovery User Program. All right. Any questions?
No, I think...
You bringing flowers?
I think we ought to commend the Rotary for...
Oh, it's a great, great, great thing.
Putting this event on.
And staying with it.
Staying with it.
Yeah. Pass that down, so I don't really all know. All right.
The thing you want to be thinking about is you've got town meeting on the 4th, so you don't want to be having too many Connect City calls going out there, and the last time you wanted to have the opioid one on the Connect City call. So we'll have to maybe do one call announcing several events.
You could do that, yeah. No one shows up at town meeting, so...
Right. You got the town meeting on the 15th, and this is the following night.
Oh.
But they're, they're all on the town crier, although I haven't seen, and the town crier, has he put on the election in town meeting?
I don't know, I'll talk to them.
There's some stuff that's up there that's, that's old, that could come down, so there's probably plenty of room.
Might need to be refreshed.
Yeah.
I'll talk to them.
It's definitely bright and it keeps moving, though, he's doing a great job.
He was busy, wearing a tie today for his Channel 15 taping.
Oh, you taped Channel 15 today? Wonder how to come out. Where'd you tape it, in here?
Upstairs.
Stairs, nice. Is it out there already on Channel 15?
Uh, he's, he's doing it shortly. All the work products have been posted to the webpage.
So another day or two, we'll have it up. Great. All right. Next up is a one-day liquor license for Suffolk Rec Center. And it looks like the date is going to be May 25th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This fundraiser for the Rec Center roof. You guys need a roof over there?
We have a...
A leak?
Couple of leaks.
Some buckets to fix.
Well, it's 50 years old.
Oh, is it really?
And it's a metal roof and...
Yes, it's there.
Some of the gaskets are in need of refurbishing.
Wow.
The garage at the street.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're going to have to invoke the rule of necessity, since I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Suffolk Recreation Center. Mr. Mogul is not here tonight.
Yep. Sounds good. That's all we need to do. Do we have to make a motion to enforce it, or no?
To invoke it, yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to invoke the rule of necessity.
I will second that.
And that may come up again tonight, so we'll just continue it for the evening.
Okay.
Did you second that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Then I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we waive the police officer? Is that also here?
That's usually...
We normally do, so...
Yeah.
So make a motion to waive the officer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sign over here. Ah, this one's got Bishop's name all over it. Something's 911 grant. All right. So up next is a grant for the 911 department has approved, let's see, I received a notification on Friday that the state 911 department has approved the final phase of our 911 support and incentive grant for the sum of $8,394.93. We should be receiving said reimbursement within the next 30 days. The original grant was for $28,148, and they just wanted the Select Board to know. Chief Ricardi. Wonderful. Is that all you could get us, Kevin, or is there any on the table, or?
We'll be filing another one.
All right. Go give me some more money, please. Thank you.
Do we need to accept that?
No, because that was already, I think that's just the final payment of the grant program. It's not the accepting of the grant.
Right, right, right.
Which will have distributions with it.
Okay.
But it'll be noted in the records.
Yes. So next up is the permit. All right, so next up is a permit for a parade. Southwick Walk, no, Run Walk Southwick is the name of it. It's the, this is where my issues come up with the things, because I'm somewhat involved in this, too.
Southwick Civic.
Southwick Civic Fund.
So you want to invoke...
May or may not.
Rule of necessity again?
Right, which Joe's, he's mentioning that he's a member of that separate nonprofit like you were on the Rec Center.
So I will make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
So you're invoking the rule of necessity?
Yes.
And now you're going to go on to the application?
Correct. The application is for a, at least for license permit. This is for the parade permit.
Worker vote.
And the liquor. Okay. Okayed by Mr. Landis.
Are you running this, Joe? You're running this, Ray?
You know, I got to do something, let me tell you. I got to drop 25 pounds somewhere. It's sad. It really is. It's depressing. I took the mirrors out of the house.
Uh, yeah, you, you have the applicant for the license here, as well as the person putting on the liquor.
Well, we got everyone in town.
So you've got all the parties here before you, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful. So I see that it's, you've been to Officer Landis, and he signed off on this? All right. Anything you want to, what's that?
He has no problem. We have a brewery.
No, they've been, they've done quite a, if you've watched their facility over there and their events out back.
Did Patricia want to talk about the event?
They've gone a long way. So Patricia, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not much. It's, uh, on May 27th, they're insulated.
Yep.
Have price for first responders and...
Old people? No.
Price goes up because you're a risk.
I am a risk. I am a risk.
We could get an ambulance call, so.
You're not good for the healthcare financing models.
So, yeah, so we appreciate our nursing and healthcare providers, as well as our force of officers, so they'll have a half price if they come, that's a good thing we're doing. But, yeah, we're gonna have the brewery there, so all runners and participants get a wine or a beer after we finish the race, as well as a ice cream for the kids.
The wine is done? Wonderful. We've been working on that for a while, so that's all up and running.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, came in front of us about a year ago. Wonderful.
Did you see the email of the winner of the year?
All right. Do you have any questions?
Well, I just would like to give them an opportunity to, I'd like to give you an opportunity.
Yes.
Since we have the press here.
Yes.
Tell me about it, I know nothing about this. When does it start, what are we doing, what does it cost?
Can we use golf carts, or how's this work?
Can we?
No, I don't know, but if I don't want to run it, can I get the golf cart a little bit?
Where's the money going, so let's promote this thing.
On May twenty-seventh, the event's gonna start at eleven-thirty.
Okay.
The kids' run actually is gonna start exactly at that time, and then the five K to a half K walk, as well as the ten K's gonna start at noon, so that gives the parents the opportunity to do kids' run and participate in the actual run. So within that area in Walden Park, there's a baseball field that we are making, an area for the vendors, and then there's gonna be other vendors outside of the brewery there. Our big sponsor is, I don't know how to say it, Jaqueer?
Jaqueer.
Jaqueer?
Jaqueer Real Estate?
Real Estate.
Oh, they're bringing a house in?
She's our platinum sponsor, so she made a big donation.
Wow.
She'll be part of it, so.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, that is very wonderful. So the two nonprofits that we're raising money for are the Southwick Civic Fund, as well as Team Justice, and all of our profits will be going to those two nonprofits.
And what are you?
For next year.
I thought for next year, do the same thing, we talked about the racetrack, would be.
Know as far as maybe another nonprofit will be.
Right.
Okay, okay, yeah, so, well, I'm gonna be missing annual for you guys.
Well.
We can draw the humps for the people.
You got it.
All right.
So, yeah, we'll make it kind of like an annual thing for, for them.
Wonderful. Do you sign up online?
You can sign up online at W W W, runsouthwick.com.
That's wonderful.
In twenty-twenty, can we call it the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration run, walk and run for the town of Southwick?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's the town's birthday.
Is it? Oh, yeah, let's do that.
It's on a Wednesday, but we're gonna celebrate all year, yeah.
Yeah.
There'll probably be an anniversary beer that year, too, who knows, it'll be endless.
I hope there's gonna be an anniversary beer this year.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be, you have to make a special brew for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, look at that.
I was just gonna say that, I was gonna say, well, depending on our, yeah.
They can issue thirty-one day liquor licenses, right, thirty-one day licenses a year.
Thirty-one day license, yeah.
Just, we could just.
Just keep it going.
Drive by the street.
Right, we're gonna have a toll booth there anyway, so that's, it'll all work out. All right, so I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second both.
Both the permit.
Both the permit for the parade and the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And he also said no officer was needed, I believe?
Yeah.
No officer needed at this time?
What did Landis, yeah, Landis noted on that.
Yep, wonderful.
Okay.
Send up on the top. Okay, so next is budget and program. F Y sixteen, C D, so budget and program extension.
Yeah, this is from, I reckon, you know, Joe, you having been on the community development block grant committee?
Yeah.
This is, this is part of that committee's process where they need to have a program extension to increase the availability of fund during, and they gotta go up to September thirtieth of two thousand eighteen.
Yep.
So, and the end date of the contract will go till next June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, so the board needs to authorize the acting chairman to sign this form to be submitted to the state.
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I met some folks on Veterans Street the other day, they're very excited about the construction, it's going well, the guys have been great, they're, they can't wait for that drainage to work.
Well, you know, think about what was the scope of services for that grant, it was the van, the food pantry, so that's been secured.
That's secured and done, I see it go by me all the time.
Public Works project is being done on that roadway with drainage and paving.
Yep.
And water line.
Yeah.
And then also housing rehabilitation projects all over town.
Yeah, but that street needed it.
Very.
They're gonna miss that tree in the middle of the road down there, but maybe they can put a plaque up. Okay, new business.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything I can think of. Old business, Southwick Police Department Lieutenant recruit, that's processes going on.
Yep, it's the scheduled for the twenty-second.
Right, gotta wear a suit that day, I'm told. Electrical inspector service, what do you want to do with that? We want to leave for Doug?
Waiting for Art.
Well, Art, Art has given you his input, and he's gonna be out another couple of weeks, so if you like the input he's given you, then we could go back to the city.
Well, I don't think we have many options.
No.
To, to be honest.
No.
And we can pull out of this at any time if it really doesn't work for all parties.
They're one-year deals, they're annual deals, they're one-year.
I'm comfortable with making a motion.
I mean, you, you've read it, you've had the Doug.
I've read it, I've read it, my, my son who's electrician has read it, and I mean, it's cut and dry.
Oh, yeah.
It really is. The fees are a little bit higher than we're normal, used to, but you gotta have inspections done, and we can't retain the people.
Timely manner.
Did Art, in his recommendation, I'm going back a couple of weeks now, reading this, suggest proposing a lower fee?
Yeah, it was, it was lower than the one that was submitted to us.
Okay, and that Westfield has?
We have not.
Gone back?
No, I need your position to do.
Then I, I'll make a motion.
Brian knew, Brian knew there was gonna be some.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approach the city of Westfield, will they counter proposal, and if, in fact, it's agreed upon, that we enact it.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I like Art's prices better.
Yeah, because Arthur's proposal had already lowered that.
Yes. Great, so we can take that off our list.
You know, and of course, the town attorney will have to be part of the review process for the structuring of the wording.
Oh, absolutely. We don't want the attorney not to make any money. All right, so a hundredth birthday for Mary Milligan?
We've had a death in, death in the family, so I'm probably not gonna be able to do it because of the calling hours and the funeral service, so.
I'm in.
I mean, Joe, I would be there, but I'm in Virginia.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I can screw up anytime, so.
If I can do it, I will do it.
So it's Thursday.
Russ, it's okay.
So it's Thursday.
She's a hundred, she won't even know I'm there. She'll probably think I'm you.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell her I'm you, how's that?
Well, we have been known to.
We're kinda short and stocky, and, you know, other than I have more hair than you, we're about the same.
Yeah, it's different, you have to be in person.
Yeah, well, I know, my tongue, definitely Russ Fox's tongue.
The Rotary Club's just.
That's okay, Joe, Russell makes it up to you, he'll go on the radio show.
Yeah, there you go. How bad could it be? All right, so the opioid thing is nothing, any old business, or?
Old business, I attended and represented the select board at a blue and gold ceremony on Sunday, the Cub Scouts at Cub Scout Pack three-three-eight at the American Legion, and it was very well-attended, it was a terrific program, we have a lot of great kids, and scouting has always been a big part of Southwick, and while I was there, they presented the certificate to the select board for all that we do to support scouting in the town of Southwick.
Wonderful.
If we could have that.
Should get that framed, they'll put in the hallway.
There you go.
We can attach it to the minutes as an exhibit.
Yes, we can attach it to the minute as an exhibit, absolutely.
There you go.
Well, thank you, Russ, for doing that.
You're welcome. It was a delicious meal.
Spaghetti?
Chicken nuggets.
Ooh.
French fries.
Nice. Did you have to wear the McDonald's costume?
Uh, no.
Well, that's good.
I got to sit at the adult table, too.
It really sounds like you should be on that walk in a few weeks, Russ.
Yeah.
Well, because those two chicken nuggets really, uh.
Small bites.
Small bites. I chewed twenty-eight times each one.
There you go, that's wonderful. Nothing else?
Uh, no.
Anything else, Carl, that you know of, you missed?
No, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, the police chief, and myself and Kevin participated in a active shooter briefing the other day by the state police, they came into town hall, and they did put a presentation on.
Oh.
For all the different department heads, and they touched upon the fact that, you know, we have five installations that we have to be dealing with, so there's gonna be some other actions coming out of that, that we're gonna work with the school resource officer during the summer when he's not in the school installations.